Gentlemen, are we ready?
Yeah.
Hold on, Mr. Chair. I will call this meeting to order. This is to remind you, this is a continuation meeting from our last meeting. And I'd like to extend the welcome to certain commissioners here and staff and members of the public media, everyone's here. This is a work session. And to sort of define what we're doing or what goals this are, this is a time to look ahead a little bit, to do some discussions about important things coming up. And to give the media a little background, we've, of course, been announcing this for the last several meetings, that we had this coming up. And I've asked each board member to communicate with me things they would like to talk about or be on the agenda. And we've done that. Jack and I put together an agenda, which you see before you, based on input from all commissioners. And then I called each commissioner individually this past week, I guess that's about thirty, and talked with one, told him that we wanted to add his thing that we were certainly going to do that. And we made a change or two. And so what you see in front of you is the final agenda, based on input from all the commissioners. So you notice there are times on it, and that's certainly not in any way to limit that particular thing. But what it is, is to place some focus on those things that are late in the agenda. For example, golden expectations for next year, those things are at one o'clock, we don't want to take so much time early that we run out of time. So we try to set it, just give them a time on each thing, and I'll try my best to facilitate. And this is also a time for us to learn. We've, through our discussion, probably several things that we've asked some of our staff members to come here and just give us information. And that's a time for us to sit back and listen and ask questions and educate ourselves a little bit about some important aspects of the county. So with that said, welcome. And Jack, I'm a little ahead of schedule on my, I'm at nine oh seven, so I'm giving it a three down.
About three minutes worth of work here before I get in front of this. If it did just follow on something where it's already approved. The engineering services on the recreation facility, the Jefferson, the Fairwood Resolution, the reflection on section on that. I think Jefferson, correct me if I'm wrong, but you need to go ahead and prove this actual document. You've already approved the actual document, approve this document.
That's correct. Okay. The statute requires that that be done in writing, so. Okay. Gentlemen, like I say, we've already taken action on this, this is, this is written in writing. So I would entertain a motion to approve that document.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
Do we have a second? Motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
This is, this right here is motion to approve what we have.
I would, y'all already approved, you just didn't have this resolution at the time. And that's basically what it is, this added, commits it to a resolution, the action that you all already have. Basically, if I was to include the engineering services that we need to do, let's sign up here, I'm going to go back out through the hobo's for long time, these are other sort of things. You could, the board could, if you've done that on the other front, something through a balance, and so. This is just, this is just a form of reaction, I want to say.
Well, we'll say this right here, that's it. As long as they're doing this year, keep stunting, they keep hunting, they keep on saying, yes, so proud, make sure. A little, what Lake County would see, don't they? Keep coming up with these same drawers under those, and I don't feel like they're probably worth what they cost. God, I'm just going to get up straight there. I've had a lot of sleepless nights, and I slept a week setting up the tunnel all night long, and the time to talk was a whole time to ten, so almost right there, I can't open this thing again, so.
Don't think I'd remind you, this is something we already voted to do, I think this is written in previous meeting. And to do the due diligence.
And for clarification, this is for the services necessary to do this due diligence on this particular project. This is not the actual engineering services for the construction and overseeing construction and that sort of thing. This is limited primarily to just to.
This is a force, man.
The service department.
Not entirely. But we do another. Ron, this is not for the, to do the project, this was on the, this was the, to do the due diligence phase at the engineering firm that we voted to do a month or so.
This is already, this is already, you produce all the information, and that deal on Thursday.
This is just a resolution for acceptance.
That's all this is. Y'all already approved the contract. This is just an exception, so we don't have to go out for bids on that, because y'all already awarded the contract.
How did we wind up to alliance in this? I mean, I come in on the tail end of this thing, how did we wind up to this engineering project?
Well, they, they made contact with the county, because of the recreation department, when they read about the possibility of doing this, and their expertise is on in recreation development. And so he came over, and I think he met with Seth, I'm not sure, he may have met with Bobby Duffers as well, back when Bobby was on the board. And made sure what they could do, and I did a lot of the preliminary work without a contract of any kind, just to say, well, I'm, I'm, I'm just, I like to waste on this other engineering project, I don't have to, I'm not having to put all the paperwork together, whether we get the project or not, I'll get paid once you do something. And so that's kind of how, how the marriage started. And he's done a good job, I think, so far, and I think you saw it up here before, he did on the comprehensive plan, he did, he did a pretty thorough job, so that's where, that's where their expertise is, his is, I think, in more than this, than in say water or sewer or, or any of the other engineering fields.
Gentlemen, any discussion? All right, all in favor here, no discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve the resolution, seeing if I'm saying aye? Aye. Aye opposed? That motion passes unanimously. All right, Jack?
Thank you, Chairman, thank you all for being here, taking the time out of your Saturday, and everybody's probably have a lot of other things that I'd like to do, we have quite a few members in the county. The honest does, we've been doing this, I'm, I'm, I'm sure you probably did, before I came back to work over here, but starting in 2008, we started doing a, 2009 at least, we started doing a mid-year review, basically to see where we were in terms of finances and in terms of projects and in terms of priorities and in terms of the actions that may have taken place or are getting ready to take place that may affect the ability of the county to provide service that is required and by. You may recall, I know Ronnie will, because he was on the board then, in the 2008, 2009 fiscal year, when we had our mid-year review. That's when we, we bottomed out of everything, and good, and in the recession, mid-year, we saw revenues were not, not going to reach the anticipated budgets, and so we went through them, and that work session, came up with a plan, and we actually reduced the budget to eight and a half dollars that year, in order to, the county just very solid, solid, get through the year, which we did. And we've done that every year since then, so we keep, we keep close eye on our financial situation, we talk about financial integrity, all the other stuff that we do is just talk, if you don't have the money to do it, you can't do it. And so it's very important for us as a staff to stay on top of it, it's very important to make sure the board is at one, that's where we stand financially, as credit. And I say this before, I saw up until the mid-year, uh, year review, is that the Lake County is somewhat unique among the other counties, we're probably in, in as good and better financial status, and solid state than most of the other counties in the state. We, we pay our bills, we, we have paying mass cuts in services to the citizens, and we maintain a strong financial position, which helps us when we go to do things like finance projects that are needed by the county, and that's why we get a 1.6% interest on money and so forth. So it's very important for us to do that. It's also important for us to get together with the board, so that the board can give us a vision on what they want to do through the next year, the next five years, whatever it might be. I think that helps the board, but it really helps the staff know what the direction the board's going in, so we can do what it has to get there. So sometimes you really need to take a look at where you are, and what you've done, and you decide to continue on that path. So I think it's always been useful for me, because we get so involved in projects and issues and so forth, from time to time, we don't stop and make note of what accomplishments have been made over the past. So we do it once a year, and we do a little bit of it at budget time, budget for, for budget, for presentation time, for mid-year. We like to take a look back from last year, this time for this year, and see what's going on in the county, and what happened, and how the county dealt with it. So I'm going to take some time, and this is pretty much in chronological order, beginning in January of 2012, and went through December third of 2012, so we're in 2013 now. One of the first issues that really came up as a hot button issue was the dire need for a dialysis center here in the county. Commissioner Bill, along with the rest of the board, took an initiative to go ahead and pursue, trying to get a certificate of need for a dialysis center here, and that was no easy task. Commissioner Bill will give us some comments on where that is now, but as far as I know, that student need has been issued, facility is available, and there are many processes now to make the plans get moved in and get started. So that wouldn't have happened, I don't think, without intervention by the county, a resolution was passed by the board, and especially, Commissioner Bill taking the time to build a public hearing to make a case for all the people in this county who depend on dialysis, and going from here to silver on a day like this may not be too bad, but you have four or five inches of snow out there, or ice on the ground, or whatever, you need to do a dialysis two or three times a week. It's a real burden, I don't know if it's pushing that freedom for the entire family, and Commissioner Bill may want to figure that out where they are on that.
Well, the more of what it is, basically, is that the numbers continue to grow, and people need some dialysis, unfortunately. The stage four people, we have, I stay in contact with most of these people on a continued basis, the stage four cases continue to grow. But the good news is that hopefully, in the month of February, the renovations will begin, the building will become available actually the 27th of January. The leases have been settled and signed, as far as I know, I've not been a part of that, but I talk to the VDA more than they want me to. So what was unique about our application and what we did, we have basically an open end application, in other words, we're guaranteed so many stations. If the need becomes necessary, the numbers continue to rise, we can add those stations without going back through the process, which is very unusual, matter of fact, it's the first time it's ever been done. So there's a lot of people to thank, of course, the support of the board at the time, but a lot of folks in Raleigh certainly helped. And, but it's a need that I certainly didn't realize how much of a need, but this morning, some neighbors of mine had to be there at fifteen to five. She is eighty-one, and he's eighty-two, and that's tough, but that's every day, I mean, and there's, we have two local residents who have to receive dialysis daily, to have their kids. They have to have dialysis daily, so, so we're, but everything seems to be going along with those renovations to get started, and we'll try to push them along too.
And we serve the board as a part of, for the, for the people in this county and all of this, not going to put a lot of money in the county's pockets, going to have a lot of people that live here, and I think that was an important action and urgent official for creating the board to be involved. The other project that we've been working on for quite some time, was the airport project, the extension was finished, and then the airport party, was able to get ahold of Grant to encourage the apron out there. Those grants are matched, they're about, they're about eighty or ninety percent of the airport money, and then the local match, that's coming in, was ten percent for it, agreed to do that. So there was a, a two million dollar, not two million dollar, around, there's all grand funds, improvements to the airport apron, and that project is, it was not completed, it's pretty close to being finished now, so. And we found out there recently that they have an opportunity to get some more airport money, but that'll be something to be taken during budget time, if the board wants to go ahead and prepare for that financial cost as well. Small Business Development Center, I wasn't on its name, but I think it's really taken off and done what it's supposed to do. Been there for twenty-five years, never has really done anything except been used for a warehouse and driver's license office. And I think we've got a lot of new businesses out there. The, we, we've been, Tony Jenkins is doing a great job soliciting people to grow businesses and several out here. We're, we proved last meeting, a new lease for a new company going in out there, it's not large, these small companies all start out that way. The only good news about that is we're able to relocate the driver's license office downtown in the building, and it's available, so that plan on making that move is twenty-fifth, this is Sunday next Friday, and that'll free up the other office space out there, and we already have somebody, and we'll need to rent that office space when that's available. So when that happens, we'll have pretty much everything in the building, except that way up, one last corner back there, and so we're working on that as well. So the county's invested some money, we've done some work out there, probably done a good job in recruiting, so the Business Development Center is, is starting to pay off now, creating some jobs. As I mentioned, the, the building that the county involved there at Diggie Corner, Paul Street, Patton Avenue, was a building that was basically two birds uncompleted at the time, and mostly with our staff, we've been able to complete most of that renovation, and I believe not only the driver's license office, but the rest of that building, which will house all the sheriff's offices, is pretty much complete. I think the last thing to go down there is probably carpet, and then put the marster in there, but the board appropriated the project, renovate that building, we're trying to do that, staple it in that project, and I think we're going to be real close to that. The good news, that's going to, that's going to free up space that the sheriff can use it. Before that, the county was having to rent space in different buildings in town, in order to accommodate the, the people working, children, nurses, techs, and so forth. And so in the long-term, I'm liking the building, and then owning it, the county's going to come out ahead, and we got, the county got a really good, good price on that building, about half of what it puts some value at, at the time, as a full closure thing. But I think Sheriff, and Bill, we get all the sheriffs and administrative offices, deputies and so forth, in a building. So that has taken a little longer than we thought, but it's, it's right now, definitely. The other thing that came up, and it's been, been an issue for the last couple of years, is what to do with the bridge, the McQuaid Bridge on Highway twenty-eight, and that has been backed around by the community and officials were involved in. But recently, as you all know, we did receive a letter from the State Department, saying that they would transfer that bridge to the county, and they would maintain it up until they transferred it, and they would actually be responsible for the inspections over the next four cycles, which is every few years, and it would only be used for pedestrian traffic, no vehicle traffic over there. And so it's one of the rare, have a trust bridges left in the country, big London community have a very strong affinity with that. I think the board commissioners came through, worked with DOT, worked with community, and was able to work that out. Sheriff won't please everybody, but it will, it will make a lot of people happy, they'll preserve that bridge out there. The big thing about DOT really did have much of a concern, I don't know where they go, but their big concern was the bridge, so that it gave access to the community. We're concerned about that too, in the county level, because when someone calls, needs an ambulance, or a fire truck, or any heavy piece of equipment, you need a good safe, strong bridge to be able to get across, and that was, changed us at best. So it was a need that had to be done, and so that's, that's come about. The other issue was the county school came up, and the, the idea was that that school was built by the Public Works, or the Works and Progress Administration back in the nineteen thirties, I think it was one of the few, that's probably not known, I don't know, just a handful, if there are that many of those old schools left, that were built by WPA, that's one of them. But the idea from that community was to use that old existing elementary school as a community center, but once the new all elementary school was completed, of course, you all know that the new school was completed, moved down on time in August, and just last week, the Board of Education, was already voted to transfer that to the county, actually did it, the county, it now belongs to the county, and we have, we have, we have, we have, we have county books now, a business plan on how to make that thing self-sufficient, but the people are going to be operating in there, so they're working on that for the next two or three years. One of the other issues that I'll touch on briefly, it took a lot of time, I think last year, the previous issue about the planning board, and the makeup and the term limits, and what they should be doing, should be doing, and what they're doing, it was a bit discussed that last year, for three, I think the board, as they were working through that, was some good, strong visionary leadership, and certainly the input of the commission to take, working with that in the county board as well, so you're able to work through that. And we made some revisions to the formal procedure, people to serve on force and conditions, have made it a little easier for officials to know, and those vague decisions are because they're on the county website now, you can download an application, if you're interested, volunteer to serve on, this committee's included, planning board. And so that's one of the things that we did concern. And you did, the board did go ahead and actually take, take action to make amendments to the planning board ordinance. And also the subdivision ordinance, which, which was one of the issues, there was a lot of discussion about the slope hazard designation maps and so forth, and the board did amend the subdivision ordinance to, to delete the language in the ordinance regarding the slope hazard designation, as indicated by the slope hazard maps, and so that's been done. And I don't know why the issue was this time last year. The county's been working on our new emergency services center, we'd like to sometime have the board take a tour of our emergency service facilities, off the Barrett Building now, you saw, they'll post up on the hall, downtown across from Town Hall. But if you've been there before, you notice, and I know some of you have, our dispatch center was in the basement, it was like a cavern down there, and the stuff here, the ground, the lighting was bad, it was in really not good working conditions.
And one water leak would wipe out our nine-one-ones.
It would have, and on that, so we were, we were able to, this renovation made us get some, some nine-one-one money and so forth, and all that equipment is what we need, and so the lifeline, all emergency services, the telephone system, you pick up the phone, call nine-one-one, going to make sure somebody can answer and send a proper response out to you. So what we've been able to do is take the top floor and renovate that, put in the nine-one-one call center up there, we have three or four nine-one-one stations up there, we've stated our equipment now for answering phones, directing EMS, our departments, police department, sheriff's office, and so forth, so that's been completed. We also have a, what we call a war room, or call room, where we have a disaster, kind of like we had here, back in the Peak Street disaster, having, you need a place for people to get together and have a central command post, we have one big room up there that will accommodate that now, with a phone bank that we can answer both all nine-one-one calls, and send resources and so forth, all of our offices in there. The other thing that we have done to that building is, there was, that building was built, there was no ADA or handicap requirements, so there was a proposal to put in an airlift from the ground floor to the second floor, and you had to go outside the building, go in a little room, and then go up one floor, and that was only to minimally, minimally address the ADA and the handicap requirements. Board agreed, let us go in and put in a regular elevator in that building, we actually added up a new sixty thousand dollars, I believe it was, in order to build an elevator that 's actually inside, that goes all the way from the basement to the top floor. That project is about completed, it's done a little bit of cosmetic work and around the, the entrances and the basement and so forth, and so that should be operational here, just, just almost immediately. So when that is finished, I will, of course, if you, if you want to do it as a group, go by there and see what's going on. We've made some changes that, that really improved the operation of all those services in that building. Imagine the director, fire marshal's office, our nine-one-one sign, our addressing office, all those things are in there. Of course, you all know that our, our EMS base was moved from there out to the old senior services building, along with the new building that was built, the house, there's vehicles. So we're glad to see that, that new front. One of the other things that came out that was a hot button issue during the year was the use of tobacco county parks, property and so forth, and had a really good presentation by some young people advocating that we, that the board take action to eliminate that. The board did actually adopt an ordinance prohibiting smoking and use of other tobacco products within the county's park system, and that has worked very well. I expect that we get a lot of complaints about that, but I have not, I have not had complaints of any, of any sort at all at this point in time. We continue to have our joint meetings, we started that, restarted that about five years ago, and this is probably the longest sustainable time that we've been able to meet with the county, the city of Highlands, in Franklin, on a, at least three times a year basis to share information and, and work, look for ways to work together. The next meeting will be hosted by the county, it'll probably be at the end of March or April, and we continue to do that, we sponsor, the county sponsors the spring meeting, Franklin sponsors the summer meeting, and the Highlands sponsors the fall meeting. And you all recall, you got accused of eating too well at Fat Buddy's last time, so we probably have to have a little lighter lunch, a bit of seats there. Anyway, that, I think that's a, that's a good, that's really helped us a lot, problems, a lot of issues.
I didn't say a word.
In the past, it's been pretty much an adversarial relationship, I think, for most park, county, municipalities, and even the school board. I think the board has done a lot, tried to patch up those things and establish a good working relationship, because we all work for the same people. We all work for the same people that live in this county, so it's important that we find ways to work together, and we're doing that, and we're working on it, possibly with the Highlands that the state and I are working on. We also, as you can hear, solid waste management plan, Chris has solved it, their program, we're looking at how to make our solid waste operation even better, it's just one of the best in the state now. We have one of the highest rates of recycling of any county in North Carolina, and we have really good facilities, and, Ron, our system's working very well, and so we plan to be sure that. Recreation facilities has been a topic this year, we've had some discussion about some action on. A lot, a lot of things in our current recreation park out here have really not been, not been addressed over the past several years since the early seventies, and including the pool and so forth. So that, the board's taken action to address those needs, and I think I probably have some more information here as we go along, as to what you've done. Basically, out here, is take a look at renovations, that pool, and that old pool house, and that's under way from here, as well as additional property for expanded recreation. We went through the budget process last year, it's been a real challenge every year since we've been in a recession, but we went through the budget process based on goals and objectives this board set last year at our, at our annual mid-year meeting. And we're able to go ahead and get the budget through, get it adopted, no increase in taxes, meet our needs, increase a little bit, and our support for education and other issues in the county. And we had, we had a public hearing on the budget, we only had one person who came to speak, and that was Chris Murray, and basically Chris correctly brought on balancing the budget, he's having to see that we did the priorities on emergency vehicles, that's the, on two ends, this is six hundred full cars in this year's budget, and he'll be actually steady. And I made one of the comments, I'm pretty appreciative of what you did, I appreciate it, and the board, on this spot, Harson, Everson, and Furson, to keep up the good work. And he was the only speaker we had, the public hearing, so he was closing himself, and he was with the doctor. We've been working back in July of 2011, there was, there was a lot of requests and concern about salaries and wages, especially in law enforcement, the section, sheriff's office. And so the board, county commissioners commissioned a study for compensation classification plan that was started shortly after that, sometime in the late summer, early fall of 2011. It's going to be called Springstead, and they've got a good reputation, they're actually a. They're actually, uh, one of the supporters that have, uh, have worked with our association county measures in a lot of counties and cities throughout North Carolina. They've got a good reputation, they've done a good job. They presented a PowerPoint back last, this, uh, past July, uh, about the compensation classification study. One of the things that he mentioned, and I think I'll echo this, you all have too, that we're very fortunate, have very good people working for the county. Uh, just so that these people we have, some four hundred and fifteen employees in the county from every, every department. They're not just basic bureaucrats. They're people that you know, they're people that you go to church with, they're people that are friends, neighbors, relatives. And we do have some employees in the county, and I think it's commendable for the board to take, uh, a look at, uh, at their compensation to see if any adjustments need to be made. And it came over the recommendation, uh, and we've been looking for a way, uh, since our recommendation came, to find a way to fund the additional costs of bringing those employees up to at least minimum salaries without having a tax increase or not, uh, sacrificing another project in the county and have a sustainable source of revenue to maintain that. And we've been able to do that, we'll pick that up later in the day. Uh, pool renovations, uh, as I mentioned, that's underway now and it'll be completed over the spring, hopefully before, uh, warm weather sets in and it'll be open. Uh, it took, it took ten years to start and three years to complete. And it wasn't the Hoover Dam or the, uh, said, or the, uh, Empire State Building. It's the Cartoon J Little Tennessee River Sewer Line. And, uh, but any of you are well aware of that. I know Paul is, because he was out there a lot when we were doing that. But it, it, it's finished, it's operational, no things left. Now the little reuse system, y'all put the action, go ahead and order that contract, Watson Construction. And they're out there, I think, as we speak, trying to finish that. So hopefully, we'll have that one put to bed. Uh, one of the guys that worked on this back nineteen ninety-nine said he was going to, I don't know, he didn't know it was going to take thirteen years. So, uh, but that project, that is finished and it's working well as far as we know. Uh, we did, we did do some renovations. We had, had an opportunity to recruit a business at the Business Development Center, Harmony, Harmony House Foods. And they needed, they needed about seven thousand square feet. We had that space, when we moved out, we had to go in there, clean it up, renovate it, get rid of the grease, get rid of the dirt, get rid of the dust, make it, uh, clean enough, suitable enough for food handling and packaging. And, uh, put it in heating and air condition, that was done. They're in business now and they're growing. They came with a certain number of employees, they've added to that since then. I hope they grow so much that they won't be able to use our facility and move out on their own and expand their business. But that's, uh, that looks like that's going to be a good success for it. It's where the county invested fifty thousand dollars, and I think it's going to pay dividends for many years from now. Uh, we, uh, in our meetings with the school board and the school liaison committee, come up with issues that are critical. One of those issues that came up in the past year was the need to upgrade the, uh, computer equipment, uh, IT equipment for all of our school system. And based on the estimate, uh, that we had from, I was going to say the Board of Education, uh, the last winter, uh, it was going to take a million and a half dollars in order to bring that IT equipment up because it was necessary, uh, to bring it up for a number of reasons. And one of those would be in that, uh, end of year testing and so forth. And all the information we're going to share back and forth with our department of, uh, public instruction was going to all be computerized now. And so, uh, the, uh, the kids come along and even the elementary school know more about computers and, and how to use everything from this outside iPad, and, and, and so the board took that into consideration and this package of the budget allowed us to go out to the market, borrow the million and a half dollars. I think we did it at the, at an interest rate of one point four percent, uh, with no bank fees, no prepayment penalty. And, uh, that money is gradually being used to purchase and deploy all the IT equipment in the school system that's needed. Instead of buying all at one time, putting it on the shelf, every time you're ready to install it, it's already out of date. You can buy that as it needs to go in. And, uh, once that is completely installed and up to date, uh, it could do that, uh, in less than, uh, five years. Uh, then there's good possibility that we can go ahead and cancel that debt and pay that off and not have to worry about that little bit of insurance we're paying on it. And in the meantime, it gives them an opportunity to put in their IT equipment as they need it, when they need it, without, uh, without it being outdated before they use it. That's a good, I think that's a good program the board and the Board of Education have worked on together. Uh, we spoke of the, uh, the historic, uh, Howie School where we had a business plan developed and we're working on that. And I think one thing this way to do on that is the board appointed advisory committee, uh, for that. Uh, some of the board members have been, I know Ronnie's worked on it quite a bit. Uh, one of the, one of the, one of the ideas was to have an advisory board, uh, to help, uh, develop and use the business development plan or to bring in folks who can create some economic value there, generate some money to help offset any costs we might have in owning the building as far as insurance and maintenance and utilities and so forth. And they're working on that now. Uh, we were able to get additional money to, uh, expand the water system that the county put in on Highway twenty-eight. A couple of years ago, we, we gave about two billion dollars to do the, uh, the storage thing and, uh, the water line out Highway twenty-eight. Uh, we came back and asked the state, they, they gave us additional money to serve the Swiss Colony, uh, area all the way down to, uh, Park and Ray Road. So, uh, we awarded contract, we ran the sun's match here for six hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. Uh, there's more than that in the grant, we have the paper engineering and other fees and so forth. But that project's going very well. Uh, we've had a few bumps, but, uh, the people who live in that area have been very cooperative, uh, and the disruption and the, uh, getting in and out and cutting off water and all that kind of stuff. So, uh, we're hoping that early this spring, that project will be finished and it'll be added to the town's sewer, the town's water system. Let's give them a more dependable water source for that old area of riverbed all the way back Rockwood Ray Road. That's not a one hundred percent grant money. We're doing that in the county, it's on the county's system. The county's doing it, we're administering it, we'll take care of the issues, dealing with it. And when it's completed, of course, the county will turn over the city for maintaining and collecting fees for us, so I won't get into that. Uh, the board's given consideration this year to, uh, to take a look at increasing additional recreation areas in the county. Uh, and also applying for a park recreation trust fund grant. Under consideration right now is the, uh, the property known as Parker Meadows. And the county has made it, has had an offer on that of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And it is, uh, under due diligence now. If, uh, if necessary, if you're going to use any public funds, you have to comply with the, uh, uh, the Federal Environmental Policy Act charges you do, uh, fossil resource study, which involves archaeological study. And that is underway now. So the due diligence on that has been extended, uh, by board action and our approval through, uh, April of this year.
April fifteenth, we will do diligence, April thirtieth, propose.
So we have a go that time, hopefully the board to find out everything you can about this property so that you're well aware that it can be used for the purposes that the county is considering using it for. Otherwise, we would be able to get the county to buy the property, so that's part of the job. And, uh, we feel very good about, uh, benefiting from our partial recreation trust fund grant. Hasn't been one to make the county in quite some time. And, uh, that's a grant we get up to five hundred thousand dollars each cycle, so application is in plan. We have to do a couple of things, emergency services, one of the board, we realize by a local repeater from downhill, fire department has a problem with their handheld radios, getting back to dispatch. Uh, we, we, we evolved a local repeater, it's in stock, it's ready to put in operation. But the FCC is requiring us to get another license, which means we got to go through all that red tape and paperwork. And that's what's holding that up right now. So if anybody calls you and asks you why the local repeater's not already in the fire truck up there, it's that we got to get final approval from the FCC before we can, before we can activate that. It's not going to take long to put it in. Takes longer to get the paperwork through, watching DC's FCC than does, as we and the board also agree. The management is all the, he actually protects the industry for all our fire departments in the county, they have those now. Those are working fine and they're very appreciative of the board's action to do that. And so that's been done. Uh, we're currently working on the, uh, Highlands project for the Highlands School, which is a huge app project, qualifies its own academy bonds, which basically is a million and a half dollars to do renovation of the Highlands School. Uh, that will, uh, be paid back, uh, over a ten-year period at a net zero interest cost to the county. That, I think, once that renovation is done, the Highlands School, pretty much every school in Lake County will be up to date. Will have probably one of the best, uh, school system facilities in any county our size in North Carolina. So, uh, we're happy to do that, anything about that too. Uh, we're retiring that, uh, in Highlands with the gym that was built, uh, ten years ago.
Two thousand and three?
Two thousand and three. And retiring that debt, uh, we'll be able to use the proceeds that we were using to pay for that debt, pay for this renovation. So we don't require any increase in taxes or any increase in any other, uh, sort of payback going on in our year plan. So we're hoping to get that done. We've, we've had a meeting, uh, and we got a timetable, trying to figure out how to get that done. Uh, to be as, as least disruptive, disruptive as we can. Hopefully, we'll be able to get that final approval, the local commission as far as issuing that in early April. Uh, and hopefully start the project, uh, in April or May. Most of the work will be done over the summer and hopefully most of it will be done. So when the kids come back to school this year, August the twenty-sixth, uh, we'll have most of that renovation done. Maybe a few items that can not be.
Yeah, as far as that schedule goes, um, that work, hopefully we start about April the tenth, where school will be going on. So the idea is to get in there about five o'clock, uh, gym work through the night. That way you're not distracting classes and that kind of thing. And then when the kids are out, uh, school at the end of the year, then they'll work a regular workday. Uh, sort of a seven, seven to four type schedule. And then, uh, when the kids come back, it'll be sort of the back, the, but the whole, whole idea is to do that in a way that doesn't disrupt the natural flow of this, this class.
Real quickly, Mr. Manager, uh, this is the renovation plans. Uh, this is what you see, this is the renovation plan for the wing at, at Highlands School. Uh, we'll place it around, it's color represents the work that's to be done. And now here's the sofa work. Uh, this is a new bathroom that we renovated, so we built a soccer field. Uh, that, the one in white is done, but whatever you see on the green, uh, the light blue and the greens are the work that's to be done. Uh, as Mr. Tate can testify, and those of us who are familiar with Highlands School, it's a much needed project. And, uh, and the folks and the teachers in Highlands and the principal was at our liaison meeting. So if you want to have a look at what's going to happen and, uh, there's some of the dates maybe that, a little math that gets right on, so don't pay no attention to that. But, uh, the goal is to, uh, and we've had pretty good success, like in Natahila, having that school ready when school was out. I mean, it's sometimes we have to have to work many hours, but I'll pass you around two other questions.
We're excited about it. The other thing I thought I mentioned on that other side of it is that, uh, this is a project that has a broad community support. On a huge app application, you have to have a ten percent local match, which is non-government. It's got to be from a private entity. The Highlands Country Club stepped up and committed, uh, to the ecology, uh, to that project and, uh, services, apparel and so forth. And so they're a local sponsor of the Highlands School project, and they're happy to do that. And so I think, uh, along with the board, we appreciate them participating in that. We've also had a huge app project in East Franklin, a huge app project in Natahila. And they all have local sponsors, so we appreciate the community's support for that on the private side. As a public private partnership, we think it works very well. Uh, we have been busy, uh, doing some refinancing, trying to save money, trying to distribute our dollars and so. Uh, refinancing the debt that's been issued in the past, uh, as Laura was speaking, that probably a little later on. But just generally speaking, because of the reissuance of, uh, my loan obligations, we've been able to, the county's going to realize somewhere in excess of a half million dollars to save on those refinancing that we've done. So we're saving money, uh, instead of paying out, we can put in a better use of other things that we have to. Uh, and so we, we think that's a, that's a big benefit for the taxpayer instead of sending the money off somewhere to a bank in our, in some other town that keep money here. And so we feel very good about that. Uh, the other, the other school, we have a K twelve school, we have two and a three in the state that is Natahila. When that was renovation was being done.
The third one is gone.
So there's only two.
We only have, we closed, we only have the two left in the state.
There are only two K through twelve schools in the entire state of North Carolina, both of them are Lake County, Highlands and Natahila. Natahila School, when it was being renovated, the huge app project we did there, we were limited to one, one eight million dollars total. And there was not enough money at that time to do everything we wanted to do. One thing's was left off, was replaced when we ended up with, uh, with, uh, the schools having about nineteen thousand dollars left and the county had about fifty-three thousand dollars left in that project. Uh, we were able to add another eight thousand dollars to it this past, uh, this, uh, few months ago. And so all the windows will be, are being, and the process will be replaced in Natahila now. So that's, it will be, we'll have everything done that needs to have done for us, so we're glad to see that. But we're getting ready to start the budget process, we'll talk about that a little later. But it's good, I think, at least once a year, if not more often than that, take a look at your review mirror and see where you started, where you are. I think the county has been able to do quite a few things, uh, within the resources that we have, uh, through the leadership, fiscal board, and the debt kick step and, uh, group of county employees. So we feel very good, uh, that Lake County is on the right track and we appreciate your support. And, Mr. Chairman, that's really all I could say at this time.
All right, thank you, Jack, appreciate that. Uh, one thing we thought we would do is, is give Lori a few minutes. Anybody who's done, though, Lori, Paul is our finance director, does an excellent job and, uh, helped, uh, helped lead the charge for refinancing and helped save the county a lot of money. Uh, we asked Lori if she would to give us a mid-year financial review. This sort of, uh, lets us know where we are and, uh, give a little, okay. Inside into the, uh, our finance. Lori, we'll turn it over to you.
You say that like you're offended. You say that like you're offended you were accused being a prass.
Oh, no, no.
Okay, today, um, we have completed the course six months of our fiscal year. So I'm just going to give you an update on where we are with revenues, highlight our major revenue, which are Admolor and the Property Act and motor vehicle type revenues, our sales tax revenues, where we are on expenditures, and I'll look ahead at our debt service for future years. Um, this first, we are revenues, this compares fiscal year twelve with current fiscal year. Um, as you can see, last year at this time, we were about twenty-seven point nine billion or sixty-two percent of budget. This year, we're at twenty-eight point two or sixty percent of budget. So we're right on target with where we were last year. So, um, you know, revenues are coming in as projected, so that's, that's always a positive.
Lori, I think it's important to point out here, uh, maybe especially for Paul's, you, uh, the budget was about fifty million dollars five years ago. And so over the past five years, the county has decreased it in the past two budget cycles that I've done with. We've decreased the budget, it's now in labor, forty-six or forty-seven. Uh, and that's, uh, has been done through a number of things, including, uh, not hiring back. We have a smaller number of employees, Jack, I think about thirty, thirty or less employees we did five years ago. And, uh, sort of combined some jobs and responsibilities. Uh, I think our finance folks, not only Lori, but I think before her, Evelyn, has done a good job working with this board to, uh, to reduce our budget somewhat, so. Anyway, sorry, Lori.
So let's take a look at our property tax and motor vehicle tax revenues. Again, this is comparing last fiscal year to this fiscal year. Last year, we were at twenty point three million. This year, we're at twenty point six million. So, uh, we're a little ahead of the game, so that's always a good thing. So again, there, even with the, you know, recession and the economy being what it is, we've been pretty fortunate on the, you know, property tax and motor vehicle tax collections. Um, what last year percentage collection goes. Last year percentage collection goes... Somebody else might quote this off by the way you say that.
Nine eighty-four, something ten total.
Yeah, ninety-six. Ninety-six, ninety-eight was our last year. That is motor vehicles and property combined, ninety-six point thirty-eight percent. And again, of course, we'd all like it to be a hundred percent, but given the recession and the state of the economy, you know, I think that's a great percentage. And I said, just looking at the dollars this year compared to last year, you know, we're actually a little ahead of the game.
I'd like to just make one, mention one thing on our board's district sheet, is that there is a law that goes into effect where I'm beginning, supposedly, July of this year, when you renew your license plate, you pay your property tax and debt fine. And that goes into effect when it's posted, our collection percentage should go higher for motor vehicles. That's really what pulls us down on our overall collection. This is a tax collection on motor vehicles. The way it works now, if you buy a car and get your tag renewed, pretty much later you get taxed to it. If you don't pay it, when it comes time to renew your tag, you have another year to do it. Then, if you still have to pay it, you put a block on. This is a very cumbersome thing. Doesn't work that well anyway. So, most of the states around us, when you purchase your annual license plate, they collect property tax if you have that on your degree at the time. And that goes into effect when you can see our tax collection rate, overall rate go up. They do it the way it's supposed to be done.
Since Richard's come in, one question I have to read through there that I was under. Is it going to be like our sales tax? Is it going to go to the state and revert back to the county?
I'm going to ask Richard. I'm not sure how that detail works. The state's going to collect the, you get your tag, Richard, the state's going to collect the property tax. And they'll, it'll be, it'll be on your registration card, what county the county has to have. I'm not sure the procedure, they'll use, get that money collected in fact to the particular county. I'm sure they'll take a percent of that for administrative leave, and the rest that will come back to the county and to the municipality, which there is a risk people leave.
Yeah. The county still will have to do, same thing that's going on now. The difference becomes, we won't send the information to a third party to bill, and it will be collected at the point of receiving your tag. Right now, the county throughout the state has about eighty-five percent collection on tag vehicles. This will go up to a hundred, because if you don't pay your tax, you won't drive your vehicle. So, we will have to pay the cost. Right now, average statewide, it's running up to seven dollars to bill for a tag, counting all the administrative costs, the billing, the mailing, and all that. And with the larger number being done at once, it's going to drop to about two dollars of cost. So, there is a...
The question is, how much is the state going to hold back? Are they going to be able to do the state taxes?
No, it's not going to. It's our money. We'll have to pay something. Like I said, right now, costing seven, it's dropping to two. And that's counting administration fees.
Two is passed through the state.
It passes through the state.
They never pass through. They keep a little.
Well, they'll keep a part of administrative, but the larger scale is dropping the price. So, it's going down. Our true cost is about six dollars of bill, and it's going to drop down to an average of two dollars. So, we should see...
But our sales taxes lagged about three months, so...
I think, isn't the motor vehicle supposed to be just a thirty-day lag, Richard?
Yeah, and right now, the, well, it won't even be thirty days. Right now, you've got a four-month lag in your billing, because you go get your tag today. It's four months for the county to bill you. Now, you go get your tag, the county will give the revenue in thirty days.
Good. Lori, go ahead.
The next slide shows our sales tax. Like Ronnie was saying, we have a ninety-day lag. This slide only represents July, August, September, and October retail sales. Because the retail sales that were made in October, we actually don't receive those funds until January. So, I can only show you four months of data, because that's all we receive in the current fiscal year. So, as you can see, though, comparing the last four months, last fiscal year versus this, we are up three point two six percent. So, that's a positive indicator. And another positive thing, of course, is we haven't, you know, received our tax yet for November and December retail sales, which are typically, of course, your higher months because people are shopping for Christmas. So, we have a, you know, this is a positive thing, so hopefully, of course, this trend will continue. But again, it's kind of early on. We've only received four months. But I would say definitely with the November, December, you know, again, with those being your better months of retail sales, that, you know, our sales tax should come in over budget from what we projected. We've talked a little bit about revenues, so of course, the other side of the coin are your expenditures, you know. How are we doing there? Last year at this time, we were at twenty point two million. This year, we're eighteen point five. But in the month of January, I will be transferring two million dollars over to the debt service fund. That transfer was made in December last year, so it's not reflected here. So, if you add the two million, there would be a twenty point six million versus twenty point two. And of course, we've got a lot of things, you know, going on this year that we didn't last year in startup of the full renovations, the full house renovations, et cetera. But with that being said, you know, we're still on track with expenditures. You know, we're not close to that, you know, you think six months of the year, you'd be at fifty percent. Or, you know, of course, some things vary. But even with adding the two million in, you know, you'd probably be up to probably around forty-two, forty-three percent. So, we're holding the line on expenditures, you know. And of course, we try to monitor that, encourage our departments to do all they can, you know, to try to underfill their budgets.
And they've done an excellent job of that. Last couple of years have actually come in under debate, which is, which is a model that maybe somebody can...
Mr. Chairman, one thing we don't talk about, and that commission he did, we probably don't know of, but county manager instituted a central purchasing agent for the county. And it's a one-woman department, but I don't know how we configured it. We can go back and look, but he has made a substantial difference. And all these departments have to go through one person. It's her job to get the best price, have a good quantity or volume.
Call resi, each department ordered their own stuff and different prices. This way, you can have a, I call it a low price guarantee on your purchasing, so that would be the thing.
Yeah, it's a manager to manage, go through one central portal. And then, before we instituted our own purchasing agent, the system here, every department was responsible for their own purchasing out there. They paid for the money, but we scrutinized that, and anything over a certain amount, and then back to my office. We just sign off on it before they do it. So, I think we've got a pretty good handle on all of our... That's why we've been able, one reason why we've been able to lower our expenditures now. I think it caused a little better internal control and some...
Couple more checks and balances, if you would. Lori, go ahead.
Okay. The final slide I have is just talk about our debt for the upcoming fiscal year and future years. Like Jack had mentioned earlier, in the past few months, we have modified three loans. One loan had a balance of two point, I was rounding, two point two million. We went from a rate of three sixty-nine down to two forty-nine. That saved us about a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars over the life of the loan. The second one we modified had a principal balance of three million. We modified that from a three forty-eight to a two nineteen, saving us about a hundred and forty-one thousand over the life of the loan. And then, of course, the last one that we most recently modified had a principal balance of sixteen million dollars. We went from a rate of four point five nine percent to two point six one percent. And that is saving us close to two point five million dollars over the life of the loan.
And Lori, the media did a good job of reporting that, but I think it's important to point out that we were able to do that through the board's direction and through Lori's doing this. And she, I can't speak enough to what a good job she did. Did where these loans are not, there's no prepayment penalty, so we're going to pay them off early. There's no prepayment penalty. There's no, there were no fees typically, and there were points charged. And the last one was the loan the county had taken out back in two thousand and eight, which was on, I guess that was on the...
Enriched school.
Enriched school, some extreme. And basically, what we did was threaten to go to the bond market and get a better deal. And all of a sudden, the bank came back and did a, how about it, please? And they gave us a rate better than the bond market was offering even at the time.
Without the insurance cost.
Without us having to go to the cost and expense and the time of doing that. So, they basically just lowered the rate, and so it saved us the two point four million, which was...
Right. So, all three loans combined saved the county two point seven million dollars over the life of those loans. So, just looking at this slide, as you can see, again, these are our payments for the upcoming budget. We're right at six million for fiscal year thirteen, fourteen. And keep in mind that our principal and interest. And of course, you can see our debt declines over the next several years. The big drop between fourteen and fifteen is your costs. You have one more large payment in fourteen.
Certificate of participation application.
Yeah, the certificate of participation, sorry, which was issued back in two thousand and four, which is where the county took several small debt issues, rolled them into one lump, went to the bond market, issued certificates of participation, and got a better interest rate. So, that's the big decrease from fourteen to fifteen, is your costs has almost paid off. I would just like to point out here that you can look at our debt in a few different ways. And the local government commission actually looks for this, and you have to do this analysis every year. There's a thing, they call it the legal debt margin. And that just means that as a county, we can technically, and you never want to do this, we can borrow up to eight percent of our assessed valuation. Well, making county's number for this fiscal year, maybe twelve, we could have technically had a debt limit of seven hundred and forty-three million. And again, you'd never want to get even close to the eight percent, but just to throw this out there. Our legal debt limit, our, so again, eight percent's our max, seven hundred and forty-three million. Currently, Macon County is at point four two percent. So, again, that's not even a half a percent, because our principal, and you just look at the principal amount only. Our principal amount is thirty-eight point six million. And again, that's point four two percent, you know, or less than one half of one percent of what we could legally borrow. And the average for our population group for counties is at like point six five. That's the latest data I can see on the local government commission website. So, just like to throw that out there as a point. Another way that sometimes debt is looked at is to take your principal balance and compare it as a percentage of your budget plus those principal payments. Ours is around nine percent. So, just a bit of tidbits through for all. And that's all I have, unless you gentlemen have any questions specifically to debt or any other items we've discussed.
I just want to say, Mr. Manager, along with this, and after what the chairman says, the job we're always be in, and us. It would be, I think, safe to say that when Evelyn left, we were all, you know, pretty nervous, because Evelyn coached most of us and taught us how to read budgets. But Lori, we're just, we're proud to be here, and thank you for the job, Mr. Chairman. It's, we're glad, we're blessed to be here.
And we suggested that we take a look at debt. Last loan we did, Lori went to work, and I told somebody how they could be up against her negotiations, because they just started...
We got Louis Lloyd calling you.
Yeah.
You know you may, if you know who that is, he's the fellow with his, is known as Board of BB&amp;T, man. And when he, when he's anxious to be with you, that's a good thing.
Yeah.
Probably BB&amp;T does majority of, on this public entity, is probably more than any other bank in the state. Louis has been done for a while, and he really knows what he's doing. And he works real close with some of the Chester to the test for that. He really is the best man of the issues that we've done in the past. I'll work with him in different jurisdictions. He's really good. But like Ronnie says, most people are calling him instead of him calling you. And he knows, he knows, he's seen our financial situation. He knows that Lake County is solid, and everybody that has a problem with this with us and want to maintain that integrity. So, it's very little to the county and our financial department.
Gentlemen, any questions who were a little behind schedule? I want to try to move along as quick as we can. But any questions of Lori, I know we've taken a little extra time, but this is recorded.
Our total debt, principal was thirty-nine six?
Thirty-eight six.
Thirty-eight six, principal, nine point four interest.
And that's school debt, everything.
Yeah. School debt makes up eighty-eight percent of our numbers here.
Okay, gentlemen, any other questions of Lori? Now, just to go, good job, Lori. Appreciate that. We'll turn it over to Jack in just a minute, and we'll move into a, say, his proposal.
Spent six months putting the budget together. Spent six months operating the budget. Spent six more months working on the next budget, so it's almost a never-ending process. And at some larger jurisdictions, you do have several options for, just to actually work on the budget year-round. But we do that every company out there. But today is January the nineteenth, and we would like to present the public budget calendar for this year in order to prepare the fiscal year, current and forthcoming budget. Right now, we plan on having a meeting with our, all our department heads, kicking off the budget, giving their work information, any work from February fifteenth. We're going to allow them, through March the fifteenth, to complete their line of budget, get it, and then put it in the computer and get their requests and so forth, and there it is back to us. That's thirty days. Sometimes in the past, they give, you know, forty-five or sixty days, depending by experiences, the longer you can give, the longer it takes. People wait till the last week, most of the time, to do it. So, we figured thirty days is enough time to sit down. Where are we through the year halfway? So, you should know where you, what you spent so far, and have a pretty good idea on what you're going to have for the rest of the year, so you can use that as some basis for calculating what your each year amount be for the next fiscal year. So, we're going to have a month to do that. During the week, during April first through the twelfth, I'll be meeting along with financial director, with department heads, as needed. Some of the larger departments may take a while, and some of the smallest may be one or two people that work in that department with a very small budget. And it will take very long to review those, and we may or may not have to review. But we're going to allow Louis, that kind of, from April first and twelfth, to do with department heads and do that. And if there's any particular department budget that any board members are interested in sitting in, you're welcome to sit in with us as we, as we go over those. We'll get you a list of our meeting schedule, and if you feel like you want to be a little bit more insight in particular issue, particular department, particular massive facet, we would invite you to join us. Right now, we're planning on having the budget balanced and presented to the board by May the fourteenth. That's pretty close to what last year's schedule was, within a day or so. So, after the budgets, as a budget officer for the county, who's what the county magistrate is designated to be, it's my responsibility, my statute, to present you a balanced budget by June first. I don't like to wait until June first. I like to get a balanced budget until you report it, and so you have plenty of time to look at and see if you want to make any adjustments, changes, additions, or additions to it. And so, we're trying to get that done in May. So, we'll present it by May the fourteenth, unless, unless you all want to do it a different time. But I think this is probably our regular, is that a regular meeting day in May? After that, what many of the board needs, workstations to go over the entire budget or parts of the budget, or just areas of the budget that you have concerns about. And so, we leave that open at the beginning, May the fifteenth, up until the budget's actually adopted. Right now, based on our anticipation, we look to have a public hearing on the proposed budget the evening of June the eleventh. At six o'clock, to have a public hearing, to get any public input you may want, or may have, that public may have on funding and priorities and so forth. So, we shoot for June the eleventh on that. And at that time, if there've been any adjustments or changes to the proposed balanced budget, we'll make those on at the time, and those will be incorporated for discussion and so forth before the public hearing. After the public hearing is over, then hopefully, a week... Uh, after the public hearing is over, then hopefully, uh, a week after that, uh, taking consideration any adjustments or changes they want to make at that last minute. And hopefully have, have the budget adopted by June the 18th, 2013. Macon County has been very well, uh, done very well on keeping to the schedule. And we've always had, since I've been here the last five years, we've always had our budget adopted here at this county, and balanced adopted and put in place pretty much by the middle of June this year. We, by statute, we're part of having a balanced budget in place by July the 1st. And so, uh, we usually make the state on getting ours together. Now, I don't know whether we'll do that this year. They're fast tracking out there, but at least we'll know what their priorities are in the current budget timeline, I think, this year. And we'll have to deal with that. But right now, that's the schedule. It's proposed. And if y'all see reasonably up and changing those dates, we'd like for you to let us know if we can adjust those. Uh, this is really, the day really officially keeps on burning. It's part of our budget processes.
Any questions about that, gentlemen? And no reason I mention this, uh, don't, uh, probably wouldn't mention it at this point, other than the fact that Mr. Colin McAndras sitting behind me did an article on the front page of the paper where he pressed your chairman, asked about, and are good questions. We're, we're looking at some cuts that have come down from federal government, take the stimulus money, which, uh, came to the school system that's being cut out. We did encourage the last two years for the school system to use all they had to submit, try to submit for fund balancing. We encouraged them to use that because we didn't feel like they needed a fund balancing if we had one because it seemed like every two, two people do the same thing. So they did use that, which that, I think the fund balance is down to about $3. It is about 12,000. It's very low. So with that said, Colin pushed me and he said, what if, what if it comes to, uh, would you raise taxes to keep from cutting services? And I said, no. And he said, would you, then he said, would you raise taxes to, uh, of laying off teachers? And I said, no, because I feel like there's another way. So I, I think we at least, we can't vote, there's no budget to vote on, but I think we at least need to give our manager, you know where I stand because it was on the front page of the paper. Uh, we're, we're still in the recession. I think we all understand that. More than that, uh, I think this area's been hurt by the fact that historically we've been, uh, Mr. Bill, construction and real estate, all have been very good businesses and those have been significantly, uh, hurt with this recession, from other areas of our country, and that money has, has affected our folks locally. So with that said, I, I said in the article that I did not feel like, even with basic cuts, uh, coming from the state, reverses from the state, cuts from the federal, that, that I would be willing to raise taxes locally. And I, I would assume that would be the feeling. I think we need to tell Jack that on the front end because he's very good at, uh, acting on what he thinks the board, if we won't pass it then, there's not much you should have to do yet. That makes sense. So I guess all I'm, I'm not asking for a hand vote. I guess I'm asking for a head nod that you agree with, that, that we should direct Jack in that, uh, in that direction. We've of course saved money on our loans, uh, we were able to possibly make some cuts in some other areas of the balanced budget, uh, without raising taxes. That's the consensus of the board that I think we should sort of get that from Jack. I'd be glad to, you know, I'm seeing a head nod, so.
I'm sure that's.
I'm not basing for saying that out loud.
Huh?
I'm not basing.
Well, I did, you know, and I say.
There's one caveat here, Mr. Chairman, we better talk about. And that's what the states want to send there. Uh, according to Mr. Davidson, our conference calls for legislative days, the budget is, is about 50% complete. The legislature's not been called in yet.
Boy, they're the most days to meet.
So it's, it's, I, and it's going to be done. We'll be talking here in just a second. We haven't changed our dates. Uh, they look to adjourn maybe first with the June, uh, the middle of June. So, uh, the word is regarding the significant cuts in education, significant cuts. So, uh, I don't know if we'll have to raise taxes, but we'll have to certainly, uh, that's going to be a discussion for our school system.
Of course, last year, keep everything being equal, last couple of years, looking at those conversions, which I think last year, reversion basically means the county's got to write a check back.
And we sent them how much money back?
To the school system, about $2 billion, I think.
Yeah, about $2 million.
So with that, if, uh.
The only thing I'd say, Mr. Chairman, is, uh, is echo somewhat what Mr. Bill said. Our goal is not to have a tax increase period. That's our goal. That's what we, what we plan on doing. And if all things remain like they are, I think we can do that. If the state, uh, uh, forces additional, extraordinary expenses on the county, uh, for services that you have to provide, and you don't have any option, and I hope they don't do it, but if they were to sign all the same, turn all the secondary road program to you, there's no way you can do that without a tax increase.
And that, that's a good, that's a good segue to this next section if I could. The next, our next section is to talk about the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Legislative Goals. And let me give you a little bit of background on what that is. Uh, there are 580 county commissioners in North Carolina representing all 100 counties. And, uh, obviously, we're the elected folks with our feet on the ground a little bit more than, than maybe, uh, those in the state. Not saying they're not, but we, we deal with our folks on a daily basis. We go to church, to, to grocery store. So with that said, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners is an extremely powerful lobby to the state of North Carolina. The legislature typically listens because they feel like that voice is coming from the people. Not to sound goofy, but they, they feel like that's a, a, a good measure of, of what, uh, the county wants. With that said, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners puts together a small group of commissioners, about a dozen, uh, early in the year. And they call it Legislative Goals Committee, Commissioner Davis, now Senator Davis, was on that meeting, uh, three years ago, Jack, three quarters ago. And maybe because he'd worked on there and I, I don't know, but they, they invited me to join that group this year.
Your name might have been submitted, Kevin.
My name might have been submitted. And I was great participating in that process. And Jack, one of the things, what, what you do, you tell all 100 counties, send us things that you think that the legislature should do, not do, change, whatever it is. And of course, we had a list of, I guess it was two or 300 things that came down. We there, we talked about it for two days when we met and we, we got down to the end and each of us could, could lobby for our particular thing that I wanted to pass on to the legislature. And in the end, we voted on, we can name our top, each of us can name our top 10. And obviously, with a very diverse group, we had some very diverse answers. But I think that the number one thing, and the thing that I lobbied for the hardest, that I pushed for the hardest in that session, was to oppose unfunded mandates and shifts of state responsibilities to counties. We go next week, gentlemen, to, to, to Raleigh to vote on those things. When, when we vote as a, as a, as a delegation, if you would, those things that wind up being those top five, will, the legislature will probably listen to it. They typically did. They try to respect that. And I think the top one is going to be unopposed unfunded mandates and shifts of state responsibilities to counties. That's certainly the one that I, I will push for the hardest. There, there'd been some discussion in the past, uh, and I talked to, we had a, a meeting with Senator Davis at the beginning of this week. He very much agrees with this and has agreed to, uh, at least in the Senate, be a, a roadblock for this stuff. And says he will stand with us. But if, if the state were to pass things, for example, uh, school buses, you got to buy your own school buses. What a burden that would be to counties. There had been some suggestion, came basically out of Mecklenburg County, I think, a couple of years ago. Let us take over our own roads. Well, that sounds good for them, but I don't want to be in the position where we've got to buy road scrapes and we've got to buy road equipment. Each county doing that, duplicating those services all over the state. So to me, that doesn't make sense in being that undue burden on local taxpayers. So that, that's a little bit about the legislative goal process, the way it works. Next week, we'll be going, uh, to Raleigh to, uh, to vote on these things and then we'll be taking these things to the legislature directly and working with our legislators, uh, on this. So with that said, I cut that a little short running, trying to get us back on the, back on track. I ask Commissioner Beal to give us a little bit of an update, uh, about the rest of the process.
What we did after Kevin's committee met, and by the way, let me just say, I don't know how many of y'all remember Commissioner Wade Stewart from Johnson County. Uh, Kevin certainly remembered that.
He was on his page.
Year, and I've had a good relationship with Mr. Stewart ever since I've been involved. Mr. Stewart suddenly passed away. Uh, we sent our condolences home from our county, but, uh, but from, uh, the association, so if I want you to remember, if you ever met, you'll remember. If you just took a picture of Johnson County, you'll remember.
Those folks on their honor.
Yeah, they, uh, so anyway, but we, uh, after Kevin's group met, basically, we're going to be debating at our, uh, legislative goals. Uh, we'll be debating about 58 goals. And of course, at, at the floor, any commissioner can bring a goal to the floor. And there's a process to do that by. And you will see some of those, uh, from different counties, that each, each section of the state has different concerns. But when we met as executive committee, uh, we reduced those that Kevin had just talked about to the basic five. And necessarily, this is not the priority, but this is the five. Uh, oppose shifts of transportation responsibilities to the government. That is a huge number. And of course, the governor and the speaker being both from Mecklenburg County, we have reached a pause. Uh, because Mecklenburg County was requesting before, uh, the labor laws to have the guy's tax money diverted back to their county. And, uh, them being the state of Mecklenburg, it's, uh, so that's something we have to be aware of. And, uh, I'm sure you'll see, uh, what was talked about, that he was got, squeezed real quickly last year, was about a five-year plan to turn this over. That's going to be, uh, that's number one. Uh, number one is reinstate the ADM and lottery funds for school construction and the flexibility to use those funds. Uh, we don't go into the history of that, but, uh, that, that's what those funds were set aside for. And for the last several years, it's not been used for what it was set aside for, penalized, counties asking for that money.
Yeah, the original, original reason for the ADM money was that was to make up for other.
Tell them what ADM money is, Chairman.
Average day membership. So you get so much money based on your numbers to the, in your school, like the first 10 days or whatever it is, they figure that. Uh, several years ago, uh, the state thought it would boost economic development and so forth by taking away things like inventory taxes and so forth and a lot of these other intangibles. And so a lot of things that the county's betting on for revenue. And so to replace those revenues, they give us ADM money, corporate income. Problem now is that they take away our ability to generate revenue, replace it with an ADM. And now they're taking ADM, which leaves us with nothing. So, uh, that, all that money, all that ADM money has to be used for school capital needs, capital pools. Without that, the only other source we have, the only source of funds that the county has of any control is property tax. And so basically, if that happens, you have a capital need, the only source you have really is to go back to the property taxpayer to say, you know, that's where we are. Because if you take away, if you take away your ability to generate money, replace it with another source of funds and then take away that source of funds, that puts the counties in a, in a really tough situation. That's a little bit of history on that thing about.
Well, now, number three was oppose unfunded mandates and shift of state responsibilities to counties. Uh, in the past couple of years, the legislature has been wonderful to work with about this. At the la, at the 12th hour last year, there were a couple of things that were shifted down. When the state, uh, gave the teachers a pay raise, uh, they did not send a check to the teachers that we encumbered and have to pay for in Macon County, which is about $350,000, which cost our county. And also, there was the adult pure, uh, homes, uh, that we're now partnered with that cost the county about another $200,000. So those are the things that, uh, but for any, and some of those things are not really a hurry. We, we, we know that, so that's good. Uh, number four, we preserved the existing local revenue base to give the counties the, uh, just like ADM sources and other ways to, to, to raise money. And number five is, uh, an ongoing thing with insurance adequate mental health funding, which is still costing our county a tremendous amount of money. We had a conference call yesterday about, uh, about some, with the magistrates, and that's where really a lot of the regulatory commitments, which, uh, that's where it starts. We hope to have that conversation in Raleigh. Uh, the governor will address the, the conference at 11 a.m. on Friday. Uh, at that time, I think if you're our new governor, I believe he'll, uh, support the counties. Uh, Senator Davis, uh, has been certainly a leader in protecting the counties, trying to, uh.
And right, about to point out, not only Senator Davis that we've started to work through in these certain sort of firewall, if you would, but we've got, we're fortunate that we've got 25, I think it's 22 legislators this year that are former county commissioners.
Right.
So they've been county commissioners. They understand balancing the budget of the county. And so they're not just coming into legislature thinking that they can do things that would affect the counties without it causing harm. So we're fortunate we've got that, that coalition in there of former county commissioners.
And being a rural county, the last thing I'll say is that we are, uh, anxious, as, you know, there's still 75 to 80 rural counties in North Carolina. Uh, but basically about 22 counties have the majority of the legislature votes. So, uh, that number has really changed. So, uh, being a rural counties, uh, you know, we live in a different world than a lot of those folks do. And, uh, we keep bringing that to their attention. And so, uh, that's certainly a concern of, of not only the senator, but a lot of anybody from rural county. Uh, but let me give you some data changes, gentlemen, so you'll scribble these down. Our, uh, Assembly Day, when we, when we go meet our days, has been changed simply because of the, of what we understand is the speed that, that everything's going to be done in Raleigh. That was written scheduled for June 5th. If you'll please mark your calendars to May 22nd. Uh, that's on Wednesday. We'll leave on Tuesday. I got to be there on Monday, but we would, uh, we certainly would like to have 100% participation. At that time, we'll go meet with our, uh, uh, of course, with our legislators from all of west North Carolina, not just, uh, not just representative west. And Senator Davis will be meeting with, uh, Joe Samqueen and, and Morgan Esposito, uh, and any others, Patrick, Patrick Henry and a lot of others. Is that his name?
Yeah, he's, he's talking.
No, yeah, but what's the other name? The new guy. Kennerston County, Mr. Kennerston County.
Oh, uh, uh, I can see.
Ruben? Anyway.
He was commissioner over there.
Yeah, he was commissioner. So we'll be meeting with those folks. So we're, uh, we're looking forward to the.
Chuck, was Chuck's last name?
McGrady.
McGrady, yeah.
So we'll, we're looking forward to, uh, to a good, what we found out in the past three or four years at the association and working through this is you don't take 54 things to the legislature and say, here's what we want. Neither of those down to what you think all 100 counties, and not all 100 counties will agree what they are. But, uh, but I think these five, you'll see that they'll be promoted pretty good and you'll, we'll hear some nominations from the floor for especially the farming communities in North Carolina. So, uh, we look forward to it. Are we all going to get to go next week?
No, I think Paul's going to be out of town. He's going to be in Texas next week. So he's not going to be able to go. I get with everybody else signed up, so.
Business.
So, and so, but right now, everybody else is signed up unless there's a change plans.
Okay.
What?
Haberdacker?
Haberdacker.
Haberdack.
There we go.
That's the last one. Thank you. But we, and at NACO conference, those of us who are going to Washington, that has been also changed. NACO decided at the last minute that congressional breakfast that we always have with our congressional delegation on Wednesday, and we'd pretty much decided that would not work. Uh, it's hard enough to, you know, to, to then get there for breakfast. We usually have, we get turned out the last couple of years. We've had, always had our congressman and several others from all of North Carolina delegation. So what, here's the new plan is that on Tuesday, North Carolina caucus, we'll be, we'll be having lunch at 12 at where we're staying. And then after that, uh, there's arrangements being made for us to go meet with our senators and congressmen members that afternoon. If that should change, it may, it may be that we have to go meet with one of the senators, uh, on, on Wednesday morning. I think we don't leave until right at 11:30 or so. So, uh, so mark that down. That is a change from what we usually do. And that happened, uh, this past week. So with that, Mr. Chairman, if anybody's got any questions, we look forward to a lively discussion.
If nothing else on that, uh, we'll, we'll keep moving. Hope to make a little bit of time here and we'll, uh...
Take a break?
Maybe we'll take a break. The next thing we want to talk about, when I talk to each of the individuals about some things we want to talk about today and making up this agenda. Commissioner Tate mentioned to me, I won't put words in his mouth, I think he and Commissioner Haven possibly had some discussions between themselves, and they can share whatever they like. But they at least wanted to bring to our attention some of their thoughts on redistricting in the county. That I did do a little bit of research on that, and there's nothing that we can do anything about that has to be done by the legislature. Commissioner Tate, I'll turn that over to you for some discussion.
You are correct, Kevin, in fact, it isn't the labor legislature that has to act on that, but we can give a recommendation based upon what we have. I have a problem with the way you're elected as a county commissioner now. The most significant issue with that is that if you live in, let me back up to those of y'all that don't know, we have five commissioners in this county. We have three from District Two, we have one from District Three, one from District Four.
And that's District Two, myself, Commissioner Beal, Commissioner Haven.
That's correct. On District One, and Mr. Haven's District Three. Presently, if you live in District One and District Three, you can only be elected once every four years. Or if you're in District Two, you can be elected once every four years as well. However, because District Two has three commissioners that are on staggered terms, you can run for office every two years.
And just because you've discussed this, man, I know what you're, where you're going with this. If you were to run, if I'd lost this last election, I could run the next time.
In two years.
In two years. And Paul, if you'd lost, you would wait four years to run. A little bit of inequity on the two extremes for a county. And I think that's basically what Commissioner Beal said, I won't put words in your mouth.
That's correct.
Clarify that.
It's not, it's not fair necessarily with the residents of District One and District Three, because we only have the opportunity to run for commission once every four years. Whereas in District Two, you can run every two years. So I think we're not going to look in the ways of making that function a little bit better to make it a little bit more fair.
I don't know if you want to discuss solutions, but let me just throw this out, this is something I'd mention to Commissioner Tate as a possibility. And it's not a unique idea, our current school board does this. You guys probably know, you have Highlands District, Manahill District, two Franklin District seats, and one at large. That might be one solution, is if you had a District One, District Three, and instead of having basically three Franklin area seats, make that two, and make one of those at large. I'll just throw that out for thought, that would bring some equity to that process. But I still think it's important, I know Bunkin County changed theirs where you actually run in the district. And I talked to their commissioners, and they hate that, and I don't think I would be for that because a decision that Paul makes or Jim makes, a vote that you cast affects everybody. So it might be good to continue what we're doing, that everybody in the county can vote for everybody, but you have to be from that district, which is why our school board is there.
Agreed. Yeah, that is, disagreeing with what you were just saying, and that is the way that our country and our state is set up, is that you're elected by districts for legislative offices, that you represent the state or the country as a whole. But I just want to, if at some point this year, whenever it comes, at a good time, I just want us to have that discussion. And see if we can come up with a better solution of how we're elected as county commissioners, how you might be elected. There are a lot of other little reasons too, but I think the greatest is that it's just making it fair that nobody has the opportunity to run equality wise. Does that make sense?
Let's put that on it, gents, soon? I think it needs to be soon.
Why don't we let Chester, what I would recommend, Chairman, is to get our county attorney to see exactly, that's a, that's a pretty long process.
I did look it up in the statutes, and it is, there's a lot of criteria, it's based on population, you know. So that probably would be good if we want to, and I think what, Commissioner Tate, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the reason to bring this up is just to, just to open that up for discussion and see if we want to discuss it. And I sense possibly that we do. I would recommend that we ask Chester to look into that and give us some bullet points about what that means, about what the process is, job like that.
This thing. And how far, let me ask you, and I'm not so sure, Commissioner Tate. I know that the Highlands District, I know where it comes to now, basically comes down and encompasses L.J. community. If we looked at the Highlands District and linked it to where the people who live in the Highlands address, that would be Goldmine, I'm pretty sure. And Buck Creek would come, I don't know if it comes all the way down to the foot of Buck Creek or not.
I'm not sure, the Highlands Fire District goes all the way to Eisenhower's Trap Point.
So that's a good way down, that's more than halfway.
It's nine miles down, so, nine and a half miles down.
And I know a lot of people, I'm sure they expect it, Commissioner Tate too, is that they'd like for this board to look to ensure that the Highlands, and we all know what Highlands is, will ensure that they have a representation that would know more about that community of that. Whereas I think they felt that maybe if the commissioner was coming down off the mountain, is that fair to say?
It's definitely fair to say, yeah.
So, I mean, that's not the first time this has been brought up for discussion.
But again, I think that where you're restricted there is, is population distribution, any kind of thing, and that, you know, I think we'd have to look at that.
I guess probably when that district was set up, it's set up by townships, you have three, three townships.
The trial.
House, last year, for, most of the three townships were in the district that, that over there.
That's right.
More than that.
And one thing, one thing that hurts that, I'm just going to say it, is the fact that Highlands probably has a disproportionate, now, Jim can answer this, and Beal can answer this, disproportionate number of people who actually live there, claiming to live somewhere else.
We happen to have a few, Mr. Chairman.
They're taxpayers, they're just not, they're taxpayers.
Didn't mean students.
No, no, they're taxpayers, they're just not voters, because you're registered voters in the right.
And typically, those are people who have, they say they live in Florida.
That's correct, or Atlanta.
Because...
Where it might be.
Yeah.
Just a little background information, according to the 2010 census, District One presently has plus or minus sixty-three hundred population. And District Two has twenty-three thousand six hundred and five, and District Three has thirty-nine hundred. If you divide our, divided by five commissioners, that's roughly six thousand seven hundred eighty-four point four population per commissioner. So District Three is presently under, District One's about right on par in District Two's, picking at number twenty. But it is a guess, Kim, you're probably, Loic, you might probably give me a better idea. But I would say our population in Highlands grows tenfold in the summer.
Or more.
Or more, yeah.
And another thing.
Presently, we have twenty-six hundred and sixty-eight people according to the census, and it goes, I know it goes into the mid-twenty thousands.
They're saying thirty, some people say thirty thousand.
And another thing is, I'm not sure on the history, Mr. Manager, but I think they've had basically someone who was sat on the plateau other than maybe Miles Gregory, did Miles?
You have to go back to the early eighties.
Was Miles the last one?
Before that, it was Brian McClellan, before that was Ricky Bryson, before that was Fred Munger.
Neville Bryson.
Before nineteen, before nineteen seventy-eight, county, they had three county commissioners. In nineteen seventy-eight, it went to five, when it went to five, it was the districts, that's when it went to one, three, and one. And in nineteen seventy-eight, Miles Gregory was elected from District One, and he represented everything of the Highlands side. And it went on staggered terms at that time too. So after that, I think after Miles Gregory, it was Neville Bryson.
And ever since then, somebody from the plateau has been.
It was just that somebody.
Miles was the last one that I remember that didn't live in the Highlands.
Bryson, Fred Munger, Mr. Bryson.
I think, yeah, I think the German name of this, though.
But just not to let you into that, you got an additional point. I think we're all sort of head done, we'd like Chester to gather this information and give us some info as to...
Actually, I looked into it too, definitely not an attorney, but looking at just, in the definition of some of the words of how they have our statutes laid out, how we can set districts to be elected, it's a little above and beyond my expertise.
Echo, Commissioner Tate, this is something we could make a recommendation, but it's not our call, it's the call of the North County Legislature, because it is a state law. These are state laws. Chester, if you would look into that for us and bring it back to us by maybe our March meeting, is that fair?
If you really want some entertaining reading, if you don't have a county government in North Carolina, you can pick this little book up, about thirty-two bucks. It's always, Chester would love it.
I got it.
But if you don't have one, it needs some updates.
Well, they actually replaced that.
Okay, I can't afford it.
It's this thing, and it lives on.
If we got a copy of it?
Yes.
Okay. Well, go back and get it and loan it out from Mike, and you can read one now.
Along that, I'm kind of in the same ballpark, though, all of you guys, I mean, it's always been us bad as much as we hope it is out here. But I know it's something that we have, Commissioner Tate was talking about one day. Basically, when we had mentioned it, some of the rest of it, it's like this here, when I was running for election, I pretty much knew what was going on in Franklin. But I'm not going to tell anybody in life that I did not know nothing of what was going on up there around Highlands there. I went up there and I started exploring and asking a lot of questions, getting some answers. But I don't get ahead of that thing, Tate would say, I don't know what's going on down here. And having somebody representing the district like Tate, being right there in Highlands, everybody knows him, and he knows what's going on the same way as down in here. But now, the way you've explained that about our District Two, they're offset by two years, in other words, you could run every two years if you're in that. And now, District One, I mean, District Three and District One in Highlands is offset two. The only thing about it, it's the same person in that area has to wait four years to run, is what we're talking about. And if they would be a fair system, it'd be worth something for us to look at. I'd be open minded, going to try to get best representation, representation for the people in the area that serve. And I even would be open minded to look at this if it was an option. It's taken those three districts that we're talking about, instead of having three District Twos, have five different districts. I would think if you split these districts here in Franklin and offset it in, it would be totally equal for everybody, all three years. To have to wait another one of those three races to get out here, I would just thought. But that would be a fair way of doing it, and discussion, if there's any, that, do, what our folks go along with in Raleigh. I'd be open minded to have some discussion on that.
I would too. Chester, with that said, if you would gather some information and get that back to us by our March meeting, we'll at least take a look at that. And gentlemen, I mentioned the break, you guys want to take a break right now? And let's, let's try to keep that for about ten minutes so we can keep moving, and we'll reconvene, I think Mr. Lacher's going here, so. Okay, on three valves.